So we'll be official.[115.13][115.13](laughter)
I said, the kids don't care.
No, but somebody might.[118.13][118.13](laughter) Okay, it is 6:00 PM. And now, I will officially call the January Meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of Carrollton to order. And tonight, we are so excited because we have so many special guests here. And we have some really special guests that are going to come and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. And if y'all haven't noticed, we have Royal Beauty sitting right here on the front row. So this is our Miss West Georgia, Lexi Atkins. And she is joined by Miss West Georgia Teen, Abigail Parham; Miss Carroll County, Jasmine Walker; Miss Carroll County's Teen, Corinne Nurse. And I have had the pleasure of working with Corinne on the special beauty pageant we had, the Miss Sparkle Contest recently. And so, we're really excited to have these young ladies here. And they are working very hard in our community and doing things to help improve our community. And in just a moment, I'll recognize even more some of the things they do. But at this time, ladies, if y'all will come forth, we'll stand and have our National Anthem. I mean, our Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sorry.[136.13][136.13](laughter) Okay.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Now, if we'll remain standing, and we have Lexi Atkins, who is going to sing our National Anthem for us.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[152.13][152.13](applause)
Thank you very much. Okay, guys, let's stay quiet just for another moment. And I'm going to ask Council Lady Jaclyn Bridges to have our invocation at this time. So let's bow our heads.
Let us pray. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for this day. Thank you Lord for allowing us to be gathered here on tonight, Lord God, for such special occasion. Lord, just thank you for allowing our community to grow, to learn, and to have a different mindset, to prosper, and to be a citizen that grows in a thriving community. And these are all of the blessings, these are all of the blessings in your Son, Jesus Christ's name. We all do pray, and let every heart say amen.
Amen. Okay, now, before we can conduct any official business, we have to be sworn in. And we have the Honorable Judge Edie Haney, our probate court judge, to come and swear us in. So we have our newest council member, Miss Stacy Gibbs; and our re-elected council member, Bob Uglum; and of course, your re-elected mayor. And so, let's all go.
Yay![174.13][174.13](applause)
Where's our picture taker? Where's the best place for a picture?
Um, I don't know. Let's start with our newest council member. All right. Your ready?
The oath of office. Oh, thank you.
This is the oath of office and the loyalty oath that's required of all elected officials. This is for the City of Carrollton. I, Stacy Gibbs, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the City of Carrollton, to the best of my skill, without favor or affection. And do solemnly swear that I'm not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision, or authority thereof. And I do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am, by the laws of the State of Georgia, prohibited from holding. And I do solemnly swear that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And do solemnly swear that as a citizen of the City of Carrollton and being an employee of Carrollton City Government and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution and of the United States and of the State of Georgia. So help me God. Congratulations.[201.13][201.13](applause)
All right, Mr. Uglum. Mr. Uglum is your ward four council member, re-elected, correct? Is this your second term?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, if you'll raise your right hand. I, Robert Uglum, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the City of Carrollton, to the best of my skill, without favor or affection. And do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision, or authority thereof. And I do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am, by the laws of the State of Georgia, prohibited from holding. And I do solemnly swear that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And do solemnly swear that as a citizen of the City of Carrollton and being an employee of Carrollton City Government and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution and of the United States and of the State of Georgia. So help me God. Congratulations. (applause) All right, Mr. Uglum. Mr. Uglum is your ward four council member, re-elected, correct? Is this your second term?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, if you'll raise your right hand. I, Robert Uglum, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the City of Carrollton, to the best of my skill, without favor or affection. And do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state, or any political subdivision, or authority thereof. And I do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am, by the laws of the State of Georgia, prohibited from holding. And I do solemnly swear that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And do solemnly swear that as a citizen of the City of Carrollton and being an employee of Carrollton City Government and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution and of the United States and of the State of Georgia. So help me God. Thank you for your service.[251.13][251.13](laughter) Let's hold up your oath of office, the true official.
Thank you so much.
All right, and our mayor, our distinguished mayor. This is an exceptional pleasure for me, because not only is Judge Kason, who she is to me, my dear friend, but she is also my predecessor in office. So I am your probate judge for Carroll County, and I'm always trying to fill the shoes of our former probate judge, Judge Kason. So you guys are fortunate to have her as your mayor.
Special beauty pageant we had, the Miss Sparkle contest recently. And so, we're really excited to have these young ladies here. And they are working very hard in our community and doing things to help improve our community. And in just a moment, I'll recognize even more some of the things they do. But at this time, ladies, if y'all will come forth, we'll stand and have our national anthem. I mean, our pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry. Okay.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Now, if we'll remain standing, and we have Lexi Atkins, who is going to sing our national anthem for us.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. Okay, guys, let's stay quiet just for another moment. And I'm going to ask Council Lady Jaclyn Bridges to have our invocation at this time. So let's bow our heads.
Let us pray. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for this day. Thank you Lord for allowing us to be gathered here on tonight, Lord God, for such special occasion. Lord, just thank you for allowing our community to grow, to learn, and to have a different mindset, to prosper, and to be a citizen that grows in a thriving community. And these are all of the blessings, these are all of the blessings in your Son, Jesus Christ's name. We all do pray, and let every heart say amen.
Amen. Okay, now, before we can conduct any official business, we have to be sworn in, and we have the Honorable Judge Edie Haney, our probate court judge, to come and swear us in. So we have our newest council member, Ms. Stacy Gibbs, and our re-elected council member, Bob Uglum, and of course, your re-elected mayor. And so, let's all go.
Yay!
Where's our picture taker? Where's the best place for a picture?
I might just get back.
Let's start with our newest council member, Stacy Gibbs.
This is the oath of office and the loyalty oath that's required of all elected officials. This is for the city of Carrollton. I, Stacy Gibbs, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the city of Carrollton to the best of my skill, without favor or affection, and do solemnly swear that I'm not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. And I do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am, by the laws of the state of Georgia, prohibited from holding. And I do solemnly swear that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And do solemnly swear that as a citizen of the city of Carrollton and being an employee of Carrollton City Government and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and of the United States and of the state of Georgia. So help me God. Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Uglum. Mr. Uglum, is your ward four council member re-elected, correct? Is this your second term?
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, if you'll raise your right hand. I, Robert Uglum, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the city of Carrollton to the best of my skill, without favor or affection, and do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am, by the laws of the state of Georgia, prohibited from holding. And do solemnly swear that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And do solemnly swear, as a citizen of the city of Carrollton, and being an employee of Carrollton City Government, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Georgia. So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for your service. Your oath of office, that's your official?
Thank you so much.
All right, and our mayor, our distinguished mayor. This is an exceptional pleasure for me, because not only is Judge Kason, who she is to me, my dear friend, but she is also my predecessor in office. So I am your probate judge for Carroll County, and I'm always trying to fill the shoes of our former probate judge, Judge Kason. So you guys are fortunate to have her as your mayor. And I can tell you that, because I follow behind her as probate judge, so. All right, if you'll raise your right hand. I, Betty Kason, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of mayor of the city of Carrollton to the best of my skill, without favor or affection, and do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. And do solemnly swear that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am, by the laws of the state of Georgia, prohibited from holding. And do solemnly swear that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. And do solemnly swear that as a citizen of the city of Carrollton, Georgia, and being an employee of Carrollton City Government and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of the Georgia. So help me God. Thank you. Congratulations. I will say, this is my favorite part of my job, because it reminds me every time I listen to this oath and I go over it, and it reminds me what a public service it is to serve. So thank you all for that.
All right, now that we're all official, we can conduct the city business. But before I do that, I just want to tell you a little bit about our royal beauty sitting here. Lexi serves as the community in efforts to raise money and bring awareness to Make-A-Wish Foundation, making wishes of children with terminal illness come true. She also attends the University of West Georgia, majoring in music education. And we have Abigail Parham, who serves Carrollton and surrounding areas, play in the piano for hospitals and assisted living homes. Abigail supports the Life Link of Georgia, bringing awareness of importance of organ eye donation, and recently volunteered to play the Christmas music at Tanner Hospital. Jasmine Walker, as a brain cancer survivor, serves local schools and hospitals in the community in support of the Cure Foundation, bringing awareness to childhood cancer prevention. She also attends the University of West Georgia, majoring in political science. Who knows, one day you may be sitting here. And we also have Cora Nurse, who serves the local aerial schools and assists organizations in support of STEM education. She recently volunteered at the Miss Sparkle event in Carrollton. And having conversations with her, she was very enthralled with the fact that neuroscience is my daughter's major. So anyway, so we're all so proud of these young ladies and the jobs they've doing and representing our community throughout all of this. And we are just so honored to have you here tonight. And the beautiful voice and everything that y'all do. And you are welcome to come back anytime. Okay. The next thing is, and as Judge Haney referred to, the happy jobs she gets to do, the most pleasant jobs. And one of mine is recognizing outstanding performances. And our outstanding performances tonight is from our Carrollton Aiden Under All-Star Football Team through the Recreation Department. And they defeated Calhoun and Jones County in the North Georgia Regional Tournament to advance to the Georgia Recreation and Park Association State Championship Game. The state championship game was held in Tiff County, and the team defeated Glenn County by a score of 13 to 12 to bring home the state championship. Let's give these guys a round of applause. Okay, guys, I'm going to call your name. And if y'all will just come and stand down here, then I have something I'm going to give to you. Is it Fritz Roy? Fritz Roy? Fitzroy Bran. Kayden Chisholm. Kingston Chisholm. Braxton Cornell. David Cooley. Oh, here you go, Mr. Brooks. Keondra Cook. Axton Duberry. Duke Duncan. Bryson Farmer. James Ford. William Ford. Carter Hagan. Hendricks Hudson. Donovan Jackson. Reed Lyle. Mason McLendon. Grayson McKinnon. Hudson Meggs. Jason Mitchell. Max Norton. Hatton Perrion. Kayden Poole. Ricky Stevens. Matthew Thomas. Ryder Worley. All right. Let's give these guys another hand. Well, guys, I want to tell you how proud I am of all of you, because you know that when you go and you play sports through the Recreation Department, you're representing the city of Carrollton. And y'all did that really, really well this year. And I am so proud of each and every one of you. And I have a certificate that I'm going to give y'all. And this is what it says. Certificate of Recognition. Carrollton Parks and Recreation Aiden Under All-Star Football Team, 2023 State Champion. Whereas the Carrollton Aiden Under Star Football Team represented our Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department in this 2023 football season. And whereas it gives the mayor and council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the players, the coaches, and the parents of the Carrollton Aiden Under All-Star Football Team, our sincere congratulations for winning the 2023 Georgia Parks and Recreation State Championship. Therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize all the members of the Aiden Under All-Star Football Team. For their fine efforts, I proudly present this certificate as an expression of our admiration. Signed this eighth day of January, Mayor Betty Kason. Okay, and the coaches, you want to come up? Look, these guys are shy. Y'all weren't shy at all. Hey, will you introduce the coaches for me? Okay, I'm sorry, I don't.
So we got Coach Larry Crowder. I'm Tyler Meggs. Got Jake Norton and Jake Perrion.
Thank you all very much, and thank y'all for your volunteering of your time to shape the lives of these young people. Okay, guys, can we all screech together and maybe get a picture? Yeah, okay. Short ones on front. Tall ones on back. Now they're going to argue on who's the tallest. This has been an exceptional night. And so, but anyway, we appreciate everybody being here. And again, we appreciate your patience and with all of our guests. And I'm sorry, I did not recognize Mr. John Lang as he shuts the door. John? Come here. John? Just stand right there. This is Mr. John Lane, and he is our new recreation director. And under his leadership, this 12-and-under. And John, thank you for all you do, and we're excited to have you on board. Okay, now we're going to get down to our citizens' comments. Do we have any comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Dean. So you have before you the minutes of our December meetings. Do I have a motion to adopt these?
Aye.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of our December meetings? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. At this time, we'll have our mayor and council announcements and comments. We'll start with Councilman Bridges.
Good evening again. I just want to say we had the opportunity to have a ceremony for Ms. Jenny Mae Dow Street. She died before she had the opportunity to see her name on a street. And that was an honor to recognize her. Also, we named two parks, and their families were there also. And it turned out to be very well. And I'd like to thank the mayor and council for assisting me with that. And I would also like to graduate the new elected officials and re-elected officials. Congratulations to you all. And congratulations to the Bowwreck Devils, because they was the champs too. And I think that's somebody hometown. And I just wanted to say, this is how we do it in the city of Carrollton, where we love, live, grow, and thrive in a community that is set on the foundation of unity, using new ideas together, set the foundation for a strong, diverse community. And I'm glad to be a part of the mayor and council, and glad y'all was here tonight, ladies. Continue the good work in our community.
Thank you.
I'd second that. What a great way to start our year with beautiful singing and beautiful faces and all these kids. It was a very exciting way to start. April is not in the room anymore. I'm sorry, because I wanted to say thank you to her for the great job this year on Christmas decorations and what our city looked like here over the holidays, and the staff that all came together to make that happen. And I'm sorry our coaches aren't still in the room, but I'd second what Betty said about the commitment of the coaches, moms, and dads that makes something like that happen, and our Parks and Rec Department. So we're thankful for all that. It's quite an honor to have our state champions here with us tonight.
Okay. Mr. Ledbetter, you want to go next?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I hope everyone had a great holiday. I know I certainly did, too, with my family and my friends. I don't know if these mics are... They're working for him. Okay, I'm sorry. But we had a great Christmas season, and I hope your family did too. I'm wearing one of my Christmas presents tonight for my lovely wife. And this is going to be a night where I think I'm going to need a jacket. They're predicting some rough weather for tomorrow, so I hope everyone will be safe. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead. Yes.
This is a great opportunity for me to be here for the first night. I mean, getting to see... I was telling Councilmember Ledbetter, when the eight-year-olds were standing here, that it's just a blink of an eye, that my child went from being eight to being 26 and getting engaged. So, and I know for you beautiful young ladies, that your parents probably feel the exact same way. They remember when you were in the little pageant. So I am just honored to be here, and I am looking forward to this opportunity and to the next four years. And I want to thank everyone on the council for being so welcoming to me and making me feel as if I've already been here for years. So thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and we are really glad to have you. And I want to just say thank you to all the departments that worked so diligently during the holidays, whether it was the, you know, all the beautiful decorations, our parades, our police department, our fire department, and our sanitation department, who cleans up after all of this stuff and makes sure that our city stays really pretty. And I really do appreciate all their hard work. And our city manager and his staff, because there's a lot that goes on during those six weeks that really requires a lot of input from them. And the planning and...
everyone will be safe. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, and I'm-
Go ahead, yes.
This is a great opportunity for me to be here for the first night. I mean, getting to see, I was telling Councilmember Ledbetter, when the eight-year-olds were standing here, that it's just a blink of an eye that my child went from being eight to being 26 and getting engaged. So, and I know for you beautiful young ladies that your parents probably feel the exact same way. They remember when you were in the little pageant. So, I am just honored to be here, and I am looking forward to this opportunity and to the next four years. And I want to thank everyone on the council for being so welcoming to me and making me feel as if I've already been here for years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, and we are really glad to have you. And I want to just say thank you to all the departments that worked so diligently during the holidays, whether it was the, you know, all the beautiful decorations, our parades, our police department, our fire department, and our sanitation department who cleans up after all of this stuff and makes sure that our city stays really pretty. And I really do appreciate all their hard work, and our city manager and his staff. Because there's a lot that goes on during those six weeks that really requires a lot of input from them, and the planning. And it takes a village, but we get it done. And I think we get it done well. I think we have a beautiful city, and I think everybody enjoyed all the holiday decorations and festivities that went on during Christmas. I do, again, want to say thank you for allowing me to serve again for four more years. And I look forward to the progress that we're gonna make, and the progress that we've made over the last four years with this team. And we have a great team. And I laugh and tell them all the time how proud I am of all of us and how we all work together. But recently, I was served on a panel for, we have nine new mayors in our GMA district. So, I served on a panel as a seasoned mayor to answer questions and give them some information. And on the way home, I spoke with Mr. Brooks, and I told him how much I appreciate all of you every day, because to hear the horror stories of some of these newly-elected mayors that have only been in office for, you know, a few days, and the difficulties they were having. And I have to say, you know, we may disagree sometimes, and we don't always see eye to eye, but, you know, we really do work well together, in our commissions and our boards. And I appreciate the people who volunteer their times to serve on those boards. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, congratulations again to Mayor Kason, Councilmembers Gibbs and Uglum on being elected to hold office. And so, excited to work with all you guys for the next four years. 2023 was a great year for the city of Carrollton. We accomplished a lot of great things. We made a lot of improvements, just in all departments, all areas. And it doesn't happen without a great working staff. And from top to bottom, all 350-plus of our employees who come to work every day to make this a better place for each of us. We don't manufacture anything, we don't sell anything, we don't, you know, we don't produce things. We are a service organization that provides for our citizens. And it's those people that come to work every day that do it for you guys in this community. And we did a lot of good things in 2023, and I'm looking forward for 2020-2024 being even better. Can't wait to see what it holds.
All right, thank you, Mr. Riches. All right, at this time, I have the agenda items to submit for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the items for consideration?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda items for consideration. Okay, our first, oh, I'm sorry, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. The first item on our agenda is the appointment of our mayor pro temp. And we have collectively decided over the past four years that we would do this in a rotation basis. And so, Stacy, Councilmember Gibbs drew the lucky straw, being the newest member. And so, at this time, I would like to have a motion to appoint Stacy Gibbs as our mayor pro temp for the 24 calendar year.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And Stacy, you don't get a vote. Okay. All right, and thank you for being willing to take on that responsibility. And, you know, hopefully, I will be present, but, you know, you never know. All right, our next item on the agenda is annexation and rezoning request of 101 Brock Street.
Sorry, I get a little overanxious.
That's okay.
The first item on your agenda is an annexation and rezoning request at 101 Brock Street. And the property is approximately .43 acres. There's an existing home on the property. We discussed this at your work session. There's no development proposed with this request. They are requesting annexation in order to tie into the city sewer system. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their December meeting, and they voted unanimously to approve this annexation and rezoning request, five to zero. The applicant is here, if you have any questions. However, our translator is not here, but if you do have any questions, I might can answer them for her.
Okay, and the annexation, do-
Do we need to vote twice on that, Mr. Smith? Do it in one motion?
Okay, all right. The motion is, I mean, the request is, the 101 Brock Street is to annex it into the city, and also a rezoning request. At this time, I'm going to read something before we hear from anybody in favor or in opposition. "Since many of you may not have previously attended a public hearing on a zoning request, I want to quickly review our procedures. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats of violence in their comments. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not each individual, is allowed 10 minutes of public input. This means that all of those speaking in favor of the request have a total of 10 minutes, and all those speaking in opposition to the request have a total of 10 minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that the elected officials may ask should not be counted against the time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak, indicating their support or the opposition of the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issue raised by the opponents to the application at the hearing." Okay, so I don't think the applicant wanted to speak, is that correct?
She is here, and her son is here as well. But if you have any questions, I can help-
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this rezoning and annexation request? Okay, hearing none. What is the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion to grant the annexation and the rezoning request of 101 Brock Street?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. Ms. Erica, if you'll come back. We have a rezoning request of Tyus Carrollton Road, a portion of the tax parcel, C070560115, from ER3 to a C2, which is general commercial. And the applicant is Maple View Out Parcels LLC.
Yes, the Planning Commission reviewed this rezoning request to rezon this four-acre tract out of a, it's a 28-acre parcel. The remaining 24 acres will remain ER3. The tract is located off of Tyus Carrollton Road, and it's part of the original Maple Street Commons development that was originally approved in 2006. The applicant is proposing a rezoning to C2 for 4.22 acres in order to develop a storage facility that serves as a support for the burches on Maple. The Planning Commission did review this request, and they recommended approval with the following condition, and this condition is consistent with what is the other conditions that are located on adjacent parcels. Monument signs are required and shall be constructed of brick, cast stone, or precast concrete or stucco. Individual out parcel signs shall be no more than six feet in height. Again, that's just consistent with the design standards for Maple Street Commons. Planning Commission recommended this approval five to zero.
Okay.
And the applicant's here, if you have any questions.
All right. Is there any questions of the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any opposition to this rezoning? Anyone here to speak in opposition of it? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request of this parcel of the Maple Commons area? I won't go through all the technical tax parcel numbers again.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next rezoning request is at 315 Dixie Street.
Next item on your agenda is a rezoning request at 315 Dixie Street. And the request is to rezon a property from R20, which is single-family residential, to O&amp;I. If you look at the application, the applicant is proposing that the .35-acre tract fronting Tanner be moved to O&amp;I, which is office-institutional. The remainder of the tract that has the home facing and fronting Dixie Street will remain single-family residential. The Planning Commission did review this at their December meeting, and they did recommend approval with the following condition, that a parcel split consistent with the proposed zoning demarcation lines must be approved prior to the issuance of any building permit or certificate of appropriateness. And that's just so we don't have a split-zone parcel ultimately. So, the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, is there any questions about this particular piece of property? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this rezoning request? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request at 315 Dixie Street?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a special use permit request for 442 Beulah Church Road.
Yes, this is actually similar to a request you've seen before. The applicant, Jeff Cox, is requesting a special use permit in the C2 zoning district to develop a 110,000-square-foot flex commercial office park that will allow for a range of commercial uses, including light manufacturing or warehousing. The proposed park includes 15 buildings, each divided into 1,000-square-foot to 10,000-square-foot suites, depending on the needs of the proposed tenant. Renderings and a concept plan were included. The Planning Commission did review this request at their December meeting. They recommended, again unanimously, to approve this request. They did have one condition, and it really pertains to the strip along the eastern portion of the property that is still in unincorporated Carroll County. It's a small strip that runs along the creek bed, and the condition is that that property be annexed in, or they consent to annexation, once a property north of that is annexed into the city. Right now, that strip of land is necessary to keep from creating an island of unincorporated Carroll County within our jurisdictional limits. The Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. And the applicant's here, if you have questions.
All right. Is there any questions? Do we have the- Yeah. I think maybe this will help understand, maybe people can see a little bit. There's just that one little strip of property there, that kind of no man's land. Yeah, right. It is not developed. Okay, all right. Is there any questions regarding this request, the special use permit? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of it? This time, I'll entertain a motion to grant the special use permit for 442 Beulah Church Road.
I so moved that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is board appointment for our Planning Commission. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Rich Weaver and Eddie Duffy, whose terms on our Planning and Zoning Commission have expired, expired December 31st. Mr. Weaver, who's been a very good member of that committee, has, or that commission, has expressed a desire in serving another term. Also, we have Curry Glanton, who has expressed an interest in serving on the Planning Commission. And that would also give us someone in a ward two that we currently don't have. And so, trying to keep, trying to keep it diverse amongst our wards, we feel like she would be a good addition to that commission. She's a project manager. She's for Ray Leonard Associates. She's a professional civil engineer. So, she has a lot of experience in the matters that will come before. So, we ask that you approve Rich Weaver to a second term and appoint Curry Glanton to her first term, which both would expire December 31, 2026. Should I be appointed?
Okay, you have the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other nominations for the Planning Commission? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is board appointment for our redevelopment authority. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, ma'am. We have three members who are, whose terms expire, Fred O'Neal, Mark Foster, and Bubba Barker. They, we reinstated the redevelopment authority last year in anticipation of our TAD and projects and redevelopment within the city of Carrollton, especially in our TAD district. These, this redevelopment authority is our TAD advisory authority, which is a requirement from the state to have a TAD zone, a TAD district in our city. And so, with those three are willing to serve again, and with their knowledge and going through initiating the TAD, we would request that we reappoint those three for the next, for the next term, and they would expire December 31, 2026.
You've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion to appoint these board members to the redevelopment authority?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, our next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none.